As soon as I have a quorum, I'll call it to order, all right? But I'm missing two more, so they should be here shortly. I think a little applause for the first two that show up would be nice, just to welcome them into the council chambers, okay? And it sounds like the contestants are arriving now. Here we go, may I introduce you to the Richfield City Council.
That's never happened before.
Well, you've never been quite this late before. Now I can call this meeting to order. This is a regular city council meeting of the Richfield City, October 24th, 2017. I don't see anyone speaking for the open forum, so if you would all stand and do the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, I'm looking for a motion seeking approval of the minutes of the Special Joint City Council and Planning Commission work session of October 10th, 2017, a special city council work session of October 10th, 2017, and a regular city council meeting of October 10th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. At this time, we annually have a meeting with the various commissions that are appointed by the city council and do great work for the citizens of the city in various areas. Tonight, we have the annual meeting with the planning commission, who has had a busy year, and I'd ask you to welcome the chair of that commission, Erin Fries Daniels.
Thank you, thank you for having me, it's quite the crowd tonight, so I will keep it brief, because I don't think everyone's here to hear me talk, so. The planning commission has been very busy this year, so I just wanted to talk about some highlights that we've held, a lot of public hearings related to Cedar Avenue corridor, interim use permits for some car sales, which you guys are going to hear some more about, but we updated the PUD to the shops at Lyndale, that's the Panera's being built there, the former Don Pablo's area, so that's trucking right along if you walk past that construction. We looked at some Plaza 66 proposals, outdoor rec facilities at Academy of Holy Angels, we've done some variances for homeowner decks, so we do big projects and we also review small projects, and those are just kind of some key highlights, Chamberlain Project's kind of a big one that's been recent, so most everything that we see comes directly next to you guys, so I think you're pretty familiar with those projects. We did update our bylaws this year, and kind of made some minor tweaks to our open meetings and to our public hearings, and how we kind of addressed those and kind of the format of those, so that was, I think, a beneficial update, we allow five minutes for comments, and then 20 minutes for questions at the end, which has been beneficial, right, to talk through that, and then staff questions as well. We've had multiple work sessions with all of you, with the HRA, and with lots of other developments as well. One thing recently that I think was really interesting and fun, and what I would like to see us do more of, is getting out of this room and into the community, and so we did a really awesome bus tour, which a lot of you are at, and so we got from east to west Richfield and kind of toured some upcoming projects and some future developments, so I'd like to see us do more of that, we have some future ones planned, probably not through the winter, but more spring where we have longer daylight hours, that we can tour all that, so. That's a quick rundown update from me.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much, appreciate the presentation. Now, we have the honor of welcoming our Public Safety Director and Chief of Police, Jay Henthorn, and he's going to be conferring some department awards on his officers. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, family and guests. It's my honor to be here tonight to present awards to members of our department. The way our awards are given is we have a department accommodation review board, which consists of a cross-section of several members of our department. The award submissions that I will be giving out tonight were reviewed and forwarded to me for confirmation. Once I reviewed all them, I confirmed the awards and agreed with the accommodation review board submissions. The officers that I'll be conferring these awards to this evening exemplify commitment and dedication, and exemplify the men and women of this department. These officers have demonstrated excellent police work, life-saving measures, and skill of negotiation and rapport building in a critical situation. I will provide a brief synopsis of the events leading up to these awards, and present the officers with their awards. The first awards that will be given tonight are department accommodations. Department accommodations may be awarded to a member of the department for an outstanding police act, or single individual incident, or significant accomplishment or achievement, which brings credit to the department and to the individual. The first awards I will confer tonight are to Sergeant Joe Edwards and Officer Orlando Zabala. On July 20th, 2017, Sergeant Joe Edwards and Officer Orlando Zabala responded to a report of a suicide male standing on the outside of the safety fence and threatening to jump off Portland Avenue at 494. Other responding officers and fire personnel stopped traffic on both Portland Avenue and the 494 freeway. Sergeant Edwards was able to approach the male by Portland Avenue and reach through the safety railings, and grab a hold of the man's pants and attempt to secure the male from jumping onto the freeway. Officer Zabala was able to communicate with the individual in Spanish, and after approximately 30 to 45 minutes, the officers were able to calm the male to the point the male extended one of his hands out for a handshake. Officer Zabala grabbed the male's hand and didn't let go. Sergeant Edwards was able to secure the male's hand to the railing using tourniquets that officers carry. The male eventually agreed to come down off the bridge and was assisted by Bloomington and Richfield fire personnel and the Bloomington Fire aerial bucket truck. Sergeant Edwards and Zabala were able to develop a dialogue with the male and negotiate with him to keep him from jumping off the bridge. Therefore, tonight, they'll be awarded a department accommodation. Congratulations. Our second awards will be presented to Sergeant Mike Sieve, Officer Patrick Shady, Officer Robert Smith, Officer Mark Mendoza, and Officer Nicholas Ship. On August 1st, 2017, Sergeant Mike Sieve was driving by the Super America Station at 77th and Nicollet Avenue, when he observed a person exiting the store with what appeared to be a shirt covering his face. Shortly thereafter, dispatch aired that Super America had just been robbed by a person with a gun. Sergeant Sieve turned around his squad car to respond and aired what he believes he just saw, and the suspect left the store heading south. The driver eventually took off running down the embankment towards the freeway. The person in the backseat now exited the vehicle and followed the driver down the embankment towards the freeway. Rather than pursuing the two suspects towards the freeway, Sergeant Sieve tactically cleared the vehicle while coordinating and directing responding officers. Sergeant Sieve was able to monitor, deter the directions of the fleeing suspects while providing suspect descriptions to responding officers and assisting agencies. Sergeant Sieve did this while simultaneously coordinating a containment perimeter, directing state patrol to divert freeway traffic, and all while considering the safety of civilians along with preserving evidence of the crime. As a result, responding officers Patrick Shady, Robert Smith, Mark Mendoza, and Nicholas Ship, along with the assistance of Bloomington's Canine, quickly set up a perimeter and were able to successfully apprehend the two felony suspects. Preserve evidence of the crime to include recovering a handgun and cash taken in the robbery. With these efforts, they will be receiving a department accommodation. The next series of awards will be Medal of Merit. A Medal of Merit is for bravery, self-sacrifice, and devotion to duty without regards to personal safety. On August 24th, 2017, Officer Supiny Dean responded to an unknown medical at the 7600 block of Wentworth Avenue, south in Richfield. Officer Dean was met by a 14-year-old boy outside the home and advised that his father was lying on the floor in the basement and was unresponsive. The father and the boy were using a gas-powered cement saw in the basement with no ventilation, therefore they were exposed to carbon monoxide. Officer Battalia and Officer Storia later arrived and immediately entered the residence to render aid to the victim and to help Officer Supiny Dean. Together, the three officers carried the victim, who was unconscious, up the stairs and out of the residence, to safety and treatment by the on-scene paramedics. Officer Deans, Battalia, and Storia acted decisively to render aid and rescue the victim despite the potential health risks to themselves. The quick actions by all three officers, according to paramedics, likely resulted in saving the life of the unconscious male. Therefore, without further ado, they will be receiving the Medal of Merit for their bravery, self-sacrifice, and devotion to duty. That is the end of our long and lengthy award ceremony.
Mr. Mayor, I just want people to know that when we talk about Richfield's finest, we mean it, and these officers have just proven that we do have Richfield's finest.
One more round of applause for the officers. I've always been good at following the stars, so I'm going to take the hometown hits first, so I can announce an opportunity for everybody in the audience and everybody here tonight to meet some of these police officers tomorrow morning at Coffee with the Cop, so. If I can get accommodations from our AV.
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's Thursday morning.
At 8:30 to 10 a.m., you can have a coffee and meet with and chat with some of our officers, hopefully some of the people that we rewarded here this evening. It's going to be at the VFW 6715 Lakeshore Drive South, that's in Richfield, obviously, and I've been to a couple of them, and the beauty of it is the coffee's free and the officers usually provide the donuts also. More importantly, and this is important, no agendas, no speeches, just meeting and talking and having an opportunity to talk with the people that preserve and protect the safety in Richfield, so if you have a chance, please get out there, I know you'll enjoy it, and it's interesting to meet an officer as another human being, another person in the community, and get a warm fuzzies about what they do and the fact that they're just like you and me, but they're here to preserve and protect us, so get over there and have a cup of coffee with them. Thank you. Councilmember Troutman, you're next up.
All right, well, I was going to mention Coffee with the Cop also, but three quick hats off to Richfield. One, we have to talk about some of our residents, and my ward in particular, the Coyotes. There was a news report of the first coyote attack in the state of Minnesota earlier this week. Our coyotes have never attacked anybody, but one reason, one way to keep them that way is to not feed them, not approach them, and when you see them, don't treat them like dogs, they're not dogs, they're great neighbors, but we want to keep them that way, so for the sake of Woodlake, that's just a public service notice. Speaking of Woodlake, I just want to give my hats off to our Woodlake staff and our Fowlers, the Friends of Woodlake Nature Center. They put on every year the Half Haunted House, it's just half haunted, it's not too scary for small kids, but they really, an amazing group of volunteers that do a great job, it's a great community asset and resource to have. Woodlake Nature Center and our volunteers, they have a trail where they collect candy and they play games, there's a magic show, there was a pet show, and so if you had kids here in Richfield, I hope you had a chance to get to it, but I want to just take my hat off to the Fowlers for doing a great job. And then the last thing I would mention, I was in the new Aldi, it was remodeled this summer, but it's just amazing. If you've ever been into an older Aldi that hasn't been updated or reconstructed, you should go in there. Everything's open, the shelf space is very modern and very open, very easily accessible, and we're really glad to have them on the Penn Central Corridor, and so my hat's off, a little belated to them for just doing a great job, and we're glad they're our neighbors.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Pretty soon, hopefully, you know, I know, we always look forward to snow, but the Pines at 400 West 67th Street, and this will happen November the 7th at 1:00 p.m., they will be having an event about the latest devices designed to help seniors and the disabled stay safe and healthy, and that's sponsored by the Agostina Care Learning Lab for Elder Care Technologies. This is really important, because I really appreciate the fact that the Pines are proactive in helping our elders, and really do the best they can to make sure that we remain active and contributing members to not only our families, but, you know, to our community. This event is free, but you should call and let them know that you will be there, and that phone number is 861-3331. And that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You know, I fibbed a little bit when I said all I wanted to do was follow the police awards, because I do have one other thing. It's interesting, you know, I haven't been mayor that long, and I've found that there's a lot of things that you get to do that are really enjoyable. You know, meeting people that come to the city that want to improve the city or build in the city is nice. Meeting with new families, meeting with all the residents and having conversations, meeting them once a month at Mayor's open hour is nice, but what really fun is on the 14th, it was, I think, the fifth or sixth annual pumpkin giveaway at Fairwood Park, it's sponsored by Steve Schneberger and Keeler Williams, his real estate group, and I was asked or given the honor to help judge the coloring contest, and it was, I think, pre-K and kindergarten, first and second grade, third and fourth and fifth, and Nick from Parks and Recreation brought all the artistry over to my office and we took it, and I had to ask him some of the rules, I said, you know, how's this work in terms of apparent parental influence, perhaps keeping everything within the lines, or making probably a little more artful than a three or four-year-old can accomplish, and he said, you know, you take it all into consideration and you just got to feel it. But it was really enjoyable, and we had what you would expect, I've seen it from my three-year-old granddaughter that scribbles, and some people that really have a gift. We had one that I think was five years old that had actually taken, there was wreaths around the front of the pumpkin, and had changed the colors from left to right representing the seasons. I mean, it's amazing what they can do, but those are more pleasant than you can even imagine being exposed to the work of these kids and having an opportunity to judge it and have fun and enjoy it, and having seen them over there that morning doing it, so, you know, all those little things that we may think we're too old for, or we don't need pumpkins, we don't carve them anymore, even if your kids are grown and gone, go on over there, go anywhere kids are, because there's nothing like it to elevate the spirits. Thank you. Councilmember Howard.
A couple, Simon stole mine for the, just to thank all the Woodlake volunteers that made that such a great event for Calvin.
But if you could say Fowler better than I could.
Owler.
That'd be great.
Well, you helped me out there, so. Calvin was a Spider-Man, and, you know, got to actually walk through the spider webs, and he enjoyed the petting zoo, and the weather kind of parted just for the event, it was a rainy morning and then the skies kind of parted, and the way that kids' faces light up with the adults in these big costumes, and it's just one of many ways that are, there's so many just volunteers and community members and staff that go that extra mile to give folks a reason to, on a weekend, go out into Richfield and enjoy Richfield, and it was just another opportunity to be just proud of our community and have a lot of fun. Second hats off to hometown hits, another source of pride for our city this weekend, had the pleasure of joining our mayor and councilmember Reagan Gonzalez to receive the Community Builder Award from Aon at a yearly event. We know our relationship with Aon very well now, and Aon provided award to the city for our work in supporting affordable housing, and that evening, there was also a lecture by Matthew Desmond, who wrote the book Evicted, about the struggles of folks that have been evicted in Milwaukee, and if you haven't read the book, I'd encourage folks to read it, it puts a human face and story on struggles that folks face every day, and obviously, Richfield isn't Milwaukee, but what's just instructive to me and made me reflect on tonight is just the importance of the stories and lives that matter, that's at the heart of everything we do here, and so I'd just encourage folks to read that book.
Thank you. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
I was also going to mention the Aon opportunity this weekend, so I will not repeat that, but just, I think it was such an honor today to just be a part of the ceremony with our police department, our department is definitely something to be proud about, I would agree with Councilmember Garcia, and we have a police officer in our family, and, you know, knowing firsthand what it's like to have a family member in police service, and having them go out every single day, and honestly, not knowing when they're going to come back and if they're going to come back and how, is a really difficult thing as a family member, so I don't take that lightly, and I definitely, it was just an honor to be a part of this, so thank you so much to our police officers and our command staff for tonight, and for everything they do every single night in the community of Richfield. The last thing I wanted to talk about was just a few Metropolitan Airport Commission updates, a few meetings coming up, community engagement opportunities with our airport, so we will be having our Noise Oversight Committee listening session coming up, and that is going to be, oh, excuse me, I have two things here. Tomorrow, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's going to be at the MAC General Offices, which is 6040 28th Avenue South, so that's where you can really get an update on what is going on in terms of noise issues at the airport, learn a little bit more about what the committee is doing, and then also voice your concerns or ask questions, and meet other businesses, neighbors in the area as well. And on Wednesday, November 8th, there is a MAC District C Open House coming up at Bloomington Council Chambers, which is 1800 West Old Chocopee is where the building is located, and that will be from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. So at that meeting, we will all have an opportunity to meet the MAC District Commissioner, Katie Clark Seben, and then also, again, share feedback and concerns about aircraft noise and hear a little bit more about the MAC's plans and initiatives, and again, another great opportunity to connect, so if you want to get more details on both of these issues, you can go to MACnoise.com, and they have a calendar there.
Thank you, Councilmember Howard.
One more, I forgot, go vote, we've given that update the last couple council sessions, this is our last chance to remind folks that we have municipal elections and a school board referendum, and your school board candidates are on the ballot. You can vote now at City Hall during business hours, Monday through Friday, I think Saturday, limited hours as well, and then, of course, on Election Day, and these elections in the odd years can slip your mind, they're very important, and so I'd encourage folks to go out and vote.
Thank you for that reminder, it absolutely is important.
So has unanimously voted to support the referendum, so we encourage all of you to do so, it really is, you know, we just interviewed last week some kids for the youth commission positions, and you got to hand it, you know, the schools are really doing a terrific job, we had great candidates in these young people, so please support the two referendum questions, it really means a lot to the community and means a lot to the future of our community.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion approving the agenda.
I saw move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved, city manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion, and once a consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on these items is necessary. Tonight, we have several items on consent, we start out with item A, consideration of the approval of resolutions for a petition and waiver agreement, and for the assessment of costs for the abatement of hazardous property. Item B is consideration of the approval of a resolution amending the 2017-18 Labor Agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 49. Item C is consideration of the award of contract to Shank Constructors Incorporated for the replacement of lime slakers in the water plant in the amount of $383,800, and authorizing the city manager to approve any contract changes under $100,000 without further city council authorization. Item D is consideration of the approval of the purchase of a backhoe loader from Ziegler Incorporated for $135,745, less a trade-in of $31,375, totaling then $104,370 for use by the Public Works Department. Darned backhoe loaders get more expensive every year. Item E is consideration of the approval of a new therapeutic massage enterprise license for Professional Integrative Body Works, LLC, which is located at 2934 66th Street West, Suite 25. Suite 25. Item F is consideration of the approval of the renewal of the contract with the Decima Minneapolis for 2017, 2018. And that's for auctioning forfeited vehicles from the Public Safety Police Department. Item G is consideration of the approval of a facility dedication request. Dedicate the sledding hill in Monroe Park to the memory of Nicole Stavros. And finally, item H, consideration of the approval to transfer projects to the Richfield Economic Development Authority. And that would conclude tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you. At this time, I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar has passed. Item number seven for our council consideration calls for a public hearing regarding the special assessment role for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property. Richfield City Code and City Charter allow the city to specially assess delinquent false alarm users' fees against the respective properties. State statutes provide that the city may levy a special one-year assessment for these costs. Unpaid alarm user fees must be paid to the city within 30 days from the date of written notice by the city to the alarm user. Fees are not paid, fees not paid within the time specified will be subject to a 10% penalty charge. The special assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees assessed to private properties provides a means for the city to recover costs incurred with the response by Public Safety to an alarm call on certain properties in the city that turns out to be false. At this time, the item calls for a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to approach the dais and comment or offer any comments in regards to the, the assessment? This is a public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to the, to the assessments? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
At this time, I move to approve a resolution adopting the assessment for unpaid false alarm users' fees against private property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution pass. Item eight, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
This is a public hearing regarding the special assessment role of weed elimination for private property and removal of elimination of public health or safety hazards from private property. Minnesota state statutes provide that the city may levy a special one-year assessment in the elimination of public health or safety hazards or the elimination of weeds from private properties. The special assessments are based on costs incurred by the city in connection with the abatement of weeds or public health or safety hazards on certain properties in the city that are not properly maintained. The owner of the subject properties are notified by the city to take corrective action with regards to the issue with the property. If the specific property issue were not abated within the proper time limit, the city would take the corrective action necessary and bill the property owner. In case, in all cases, property owners will be notified that any unpaid charges or fees may be assessed against the property. So this is a, a, excuse me, a hearing. Is anybody here to speak on this topic? If you could come up, please, oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you could come up, please, and sign in with your name and address.
Can you please speak directly into the mic? It's the only way that the public can hear you.
So I live with my mother at her house and she got charged for them to come mow the lawn. And the date was, the, so they gave us the date till eight twenty-nine of 2016. The day they mowed it was eight twenty-six of 2016. We still had two days to mow it. And I already had it half mowed and they still came and mowed it two days early. And now they're charging us $145 to mow the lawn when we still had two more days to finish it. My mower broke down and I got it fixed and I still had one more day to mow it. By the time I got back with the mower, they already mowed it and charged there.
So just so I understand, you received a notice in the city that it had to be cut by a certain date?
Correct.
And you began, and mower broke down and you still had one day to finish it? When you came back, it had already been cut?
Correct.
City Manager, I mean, is, can we speak with someone in Public Works or try to figure out the timing on this to see if?
We will. Mr. Mayor, we will go and take a look at the specifics. The one thing I need and we should have, a person needs to identify themselves and.
My name's Mark Klein. This is my mom.
And the address.
6937 Nicollet Avenue, South, Richfield, Minnesota.
All right. And we'll certainly take a look at that and we can, we'll verify the dates that they were told and I, I'm sure we can find out the date it was mowed.
I have, I have the paperwork right here.
You can look at the paperwork. I got.
Yeah, well, we can't get it done tonight. What we'll do is, is we'll pass this and reserve, reserve that particular address until you've had an opportunity to talk with city staff, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
You guys will mail us something out or?
I would expect that, that if you, you might have to come by, I don't know. We'll make arrangements to get into contact with you, make sure that, that everything gets checked out before anything, anything goes on the books in terms of the assessment.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Have a good day.
Mr. Mayor, could I just say something really quick? I just want to thank the clients for coming and it's not easy to, to come and speak before the dais and come in here. And so I appreciate you guys. This is, this is your, this is your house. This is your City Hall. So I just want to thank you guys for coming.
Is anybody else here to speak on the issue? This is a public hearing. Nobody else?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would like to make the motion to approve a resolution adopting the assessment for re-d elimination from private property and removal or elimination of public health or safety hazards from private property.
Can we just put in a caveat that the assessment against 6937 Nicollet is, is abated until they have an opportunity to speak with the city? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item number nine, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is consideration for, to cancel a public hearing, resolution granting approval to the final plat of the Cedar Point Commons Second Edition. The City Council approved the final development plans and a preliminary plat for the Cedar Point Commons Second Edition on August the 23rd of 2016. Since that time, the retail building has been constructed and opened and plans for the daycare user for the northern half of the site have continued to move forward. A final plat application has been received and reviewed. The property owners, ample companies is working to address final plat comments from the city, from the city. Hennepin County and Three Rivers Park District and, okay, revised plans have not been reviewed. A new public hearing will be scheduled when the receipt, with the receipt of those plans. So I will renew my notion that we cancel, cancel the public hearing to consider approval of the final plat for the Cedar Point Commons Second Edition. Does anybody second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is canceled. Item number 10, Councilmember Howard.
I have consideration of the approval of an ordinance amending residential driveway regulations and considering, and consideration of a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. At the direction of the City Council, planning staff researched potential modifications to driveway regulations. Current regulations prohibit properties with narrow, single-car garages from having a driveway that is wider than the garage itself. City staff and council members annually receive a small number of complaints regarding this policy. In conjunction with relaxing that particular regulation, staff is also proposing modifications to other driveway regulations which were last amended in 2005. And I think I might just turn this one over to staff. First, just mentioning a little bit of the backstory here that I just think is relevant. A resident had a, as we, as the summary mentions, a single garage, was planning on doing a remodel to, and realized that the ordinance was out of date, contacted council members, contacted city staff. We had staff drive out, you know, talk with the resident, drive out, look at the property, then solicit feedback from council members and put together this policy that I think is an update and one that's responding to concerns that our residents are having. So I just raise that in that if folks have a question about why something is some way, contact your council member, contact city staff. And this is an example of how we're being responsive to those concerns. And now for the details, I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Mayor Elliott, members of the City Council. So where did you, where did we leave off there in the executive summary?
Sure. So the current regulations is where I left off with some of the details, just to leave it to folks.
Yeah, absolutely. So under, under current regulations, driveway width is determined in two ways. By the definition of a driveway, a driveway must lead to a garage or otherwise, other authorized parking area. Parking in the front yard area is only permitted on driveways. And the driveway, driveway width is also based on the lot width, no more than 35% of the front yard area. For the, for those properties with narrow, single-car garages, driveway width is limited to as little as 10 to 14 feet regardless of the lot width. This is what was found to be an overly, an overly restrictive policy, making it difficult to park two cars side by side or to bypass a parked car at any point. Properties that fall into that category do make up a fair percentage of the housing stock in Richfield. And current regulate, furthermore, current regulations do not specify how and where a driveway should taper from its maximum width up at the garage down to an existing curb cut that is narrower. This lack of specificity has resulted in some driveways being widened all the way out to the curb without replacing the curb cut. And there were some images of that in the staff report as well. To remedy those related issues, staff recommends amending the clause regarding lot widths and also adding a new clause to the ordinance as follows. So the new, the new ordinance would read, "width shall not exceed 35% of the front yard area, up to 20 feet maximum, whichever is less. And driveway width shall not exceed the width of the curb cut within 20 feet of the curb line. Beyond that point, the width of the driveway may, may increase to the number, to the 35% number, up to a maximum of 20 feet." We're also adding a new requirement that the widened portion of the driveway be screened with plantings to kind of mitigate that, that widened portion. Since the first reading of the ordinance earlier this month, the method of measurement was changed from within 10 feet of the property line to within, within 20 feet of the curb line. The reason for that change was that it would be an administrative hardship to locate property lines for every potential driveway expansion. The proposed change is actually slightly less restrictive than the first reading language. And there was a diagram attached at the very end of the report, just clarifying that, that difference in how we would measure it. Other proposed changes to driveway regulations include, so in addition to relaxing that regulation for narrow, for narrow garages, staff is proposing to modify the following. Lots with alley access shall not be permitted to install a curb cut in the front yard. This is actually the current policy for new homes constructed through the, through the Richfield Rediscovered Program. And staff recommends making that policy effective citywide. If unique conditions do exist necessitating a front driveway when alley access is provided, a property owner may apply for a variance. Additionally, corner lots will only be permitted one curb cut. Currently, corner properties are eligible for a curb cut to each street. Most corner properties have garages that are accessed off of the side or the street or corner side rather than in the front yard. A small number of corner properties do have front driveways. And under current policy, they're allowed to retain that front driveway when adding a new garage and driveway on the side. Many of those existing front driveways, however, are closer to the intersection than allowed by ordinance. So this change would actually require removal of an existing front driveway if a new garage and driveway are added on the street or corner side of the property. And again, that's for corner properties only. And then finally, turnaround areas will only be permitted on arterial streets. Currently, the ordinance allows turnarounds on arterial and collector streets. And we've outlined in the ordinance, ordinance here is, or in the staff report as well, which streets are arterials and which are collectors. With, in practice, these turnaround areas have only been built on arterial roads like, like Portland Avenue, Lindell Avenue, et cetera. Very few of them have been constructed on collector streets with the exception of Bloomington Avenue, north of 66th Street. And on 12th Avenue, south of 66th Street, the remainder of the collector streets, they all run east-west. So they don't really abut the front yard area of these residential properties. So it's mostly a moot point. Wider driveways and turnarounds are permitted in the corner for those properties. Wider driveways are permitted in corner and street side yards. Benefits of limiting driveway widths in the front yard and boulevard area include minimizing impervious surfaces, retaining space for boulevard trees, retaining on-street parking capacity, and maintaining existing neighborhood aesthetics. And that concludes the staff report and we'll take any questions from you.
If I may, Mr. Brillhart, your, your presentation was laudatory. I mean, articulate, clear. I understood nothing. I hate, and all I'm going to suggest is, there was a lot, a lot there, a lot of 10-foot this and curb cuts that. And all I'm going to suggest, if anybody wants to improve their driveway, to call the city and, and get some, some ideas on what they can and cannot do. So I appreciate that. I'm wondering, I know that, that pictures, you know, paint a thousand words. Can you, do you have, is there some way AV can put up what you were talking about in terms of single-car detached? Because I know that the graphics were very good. You could look at those and you could understand exactly what was being said. If we can put some of those pictures up, the people will just have a working understanding of what we're trying to do to assist them in terms of widening their driveways and having additional parking on those single-car garages with a narrow driveway. So if, if we can do it, we can maybe put it on our webpage or, or make it available so they can look and, and see what you were describing.
Mayor Elliott, would you like us to display any of those graphics for the folks watching?
If you could, I think, I think that would put some context to what you were telling them.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, and then also after, if this ordinance is, is enacted, staff will of course update all of our handouts and driveway permit applications to reflect the, these changes as well.
If you could just do a, a quick run-through, that'd be appreciated.
Okay, so currently displayed is the, the proposed change for attached garages. On the left side of the screen, a house with a single-car attached garage is shown. And under the current ordinance, that driveway width is limited to 10 to 14 feet, basically whatever the width of the garage is. And, and oftentimes too, properties like that with a, with a single-car attached garage, it's the, it's most common on a Rambler-style houses where the house is actually built all the way across the lot and the property owner really does not have the ability to add, to, they, they don't have the ability to build a, a two-car garage. So under the court, under the current ordinance, they're strictly limited to that 10 to 14 feet, whatever it is. On the right side of the screen, you'll see what we're proposing for those type of properties. So rather than that strict limit on the width of the garage, they would actually be allowed to go up to whatever the full width allowed based on their lot width. So that's in the range of 17 and a half to 20 feet. And we've shown there as well how that widening should be, how that widening should be accommodated. What we heard from the city engineer was that most, most folks opt not to. What we heard from the city engineer was that most, most folks opt not to, when they're expanding a driveway or doing any kind of expansion project, the vast majority of folks opt not to replace the, the curb cut in the city right-of-way or the driveway apron, just basically due to expense. They leave that in place. So we wanted to clarify in this ordinance how a wider driveway should taper down to that rather than just paving it straight out to the street, which some of that was happening under, under the current ordinance. Next up, we have the, the same scenario but with a detached garage. I, I won't go into detail because it's essentially the same, same image, same scenario, but with a detached garage instead of attached. And the ordinance would treat detached and attached garages similarly. Following that, I just put together some images that I captured from Google Street View showing that, that first image at the top. We'll see if I can zoom in a little closer. So shown here was a couple examples of that ambiguity in the current ordinance where folks were just paving the driveway or paving it all the way out to the curb outside of the curb cut. Particularly the image on the right, it shows that paved out to the street. And that isn't necessarily allowed under the current ordinance, but it's kind of a gray area. So I'm, I'm happy to, to have found a solution that could clear that up in the revise, in the ordinance in front of you tonight. The next image is actually a good example of what we will allow. So this is an existing narrow curb cut. Like I said, most people opt to leave that in place just due to the expense, showing how it would taper to provide that extra parking spot off to the side. That surprisingly, you may be surprised to find out that is not currently allowed, but that is what we would be allowing under this ordinance. This photo here shows the example of a corner property that has two driveways. They've got a driveway out to the street. And as you can see, that, that front driveway is very close to the street corner, probably not in compliance with, with the distance it is supposed to be from the corner. Under the, under the proposed change included in here, when a homeowner in this situation, I, I assumed that attached garage was there first and then they added a detached garage there off the, the side street. So under the proposed ordinance, they would have had to remove that front driveway in order to add the, the second garage and driveway off the back. And then finally, the last image here is just an example of a driveway permitted on a block that, that has alley service. So you can just see that the driveway is not really in the, the character of, the, the large front driveway is just not really in, in character with the rest of the block that is served by alleys.
Thank you. You have cleared the fog. Councilmember Howard?
Let me go back to the screen here. Oh, nope. One more time. Thinking about it. There we go. So I will make the motion, I think we have two of them, to approve an ordinance amending residential driveway regulations and approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending residential driveway regulations.
Second, both. All in favor?
Aye.
Both resolutions are passed. Item number twelve.
Eleven.
Eleven, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Director Asher and, and our city attorney, Tejan, for working on this particular item. This is consideration for the approval of a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a local road improvement program grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for four million three hundred and ten thousand dollars to be used in right-of-way acquisition for the Seventy-seventh Street extension and crossing of Trunk Highway Seventy-seven. In two thousand and fifteen, the city was awarded ten million dollars for local road improvement program to be used towards right-of-way acquisition and construction of the Seventy-seventh Street extension and Trunk Highway Seventy-seven crossing. The program will be administered by the Department of Transportation and it requires a grant agreement has to be part of the process to release the funding. Once the agreement is in place, a portion of the funds will be available immediately for right-of-way acquisition, the amount of four million three hundred and ten thousand. So the remainder of the ten million, as well as any funds remaining, remaining after this agreement, from this agreement after the right-of-way acquisition will be available immediately for construction. To begin construction, the city shall not sell, transfer, or lease any part of its ownership in real property acquiring, acquired using these funds without the written consent of both MnDOT and the Commissioner. I think this is pretty straightforward. I don't know if, if Director Asher wants to add any comments to this.
Councilmember Garcia, Mayor Elliott, I'd just add that it's, like you said, it's been since two thousand and fifteen that we were granted the money, but since we haven't been, you know, it's been a long road and we'll have access to this money before the year is out, I'm sure. We're moving along the right-of-way. We're updating our appraisals and things like that to keep this moving as soon as we can.
Well, we, we really appreciate the fact that you've really persevered and, and, you know, it's not easy to work with MnDOT. You know, I, I know that from personal experience, but I really think you have done really a good job. And, and in fact, any, everybody that's been working on this particular issue on Seventy-seventh Street and the underpass has really had a lot of patience and, and has really pressed on to overcome all these barriers that seem to creep before us, you know. So thank you for that.
If I may, it's my recollection that, that last week, I think after a work session, I think it was indicated that you and the city manager are going to be meeting with MnDOT the next day. How'd, how'd those negotiations go? Are we, do we have a, a, a intent to agree? Are there still some final details to be worked out?
They made the changes that we requested, so everything looks good.
So, okay, that's great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, I just want to echo what Councilmember Garcia said and thank staff who've been working diligently on this for, is it now more than two years since the legislature approved that ten million dollars? And, and thank you to the legislature for doing so. But this is just a big step in the process and helps us get one step closer to making the underpass reality, something that we all think offers great benefits to the city. So thank you to our staff for your diligent work on this.
Absolutely. So I, I will, unless there's other comment. I will, I will renew my motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the city to enter into a local road improvement program grant agreement with MnDOT, Agreement Number One Zero Two Nine Three Four Four, for four million three hundred and ten thousand dollars to be used in the right-of-way acquisition for the Seventy-seventh Street extension and crossing of Trunk Highway Seventy-seven.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Easy, easy passage. Thank you all. Councilmember Troutman, item twelve.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Item number twelve is consideration for the approval of the resolution to either approve or deny a conditional use permit in variances for a restaurant with a drive-thru at fifteen, or excuse me, sixty-five twenty-nine Penn Avenue, sixty-five forty-five Penn Avenue, and twenty-two ten Sixty-sixth Street West. Penn Avenue Partners Two LLC is the applicant and they've submitted the application for a Dunkin' Donuts to be placed on the sixty-fifth twenty-nine location. Currently, it's a car hop historically in Arby's. And then also make some related improvements to the adjoining sites and parcels at sixty-five forty-five Penn and twenty-two ten Sixty-sixth Street West. That, the twenty-two Sixty-sixth Street West is just, they call, the, the executive summary calls it an unimproved alley. It's real, it's kind of a, a rump alley. It doesn't drive, it doesn't go to anywhere, but it's a, it's a little parcel of land there. So there were a number of variances that, that they've requested for, five in particular. Proximity of the drive-thru speaker to residential property, it's a hundred and fifty feet that's required. It's eighty-nine point six feet that's proposed. Building coverage from twenty-five percentage coverage to nine point six four percent. Rear building setback, instead of a fifteen-feet, fifteen-foot maximum setback, there's eighty-five foot proposed. A buffer distance adjacent to residential property, fifteen feet is required. And they've asked for an accommodation to, to only allow for eleven point five feet. Also, because there are two parcels, they're asking for a variance in the, in signage. So they're, they're, they're doing, they're making improvements to all the parcels as I understand it. But there's signage on the corner parcel that they'd like to use for the, for the Dunkin' Donuts. So the planning commission, before I say anything, I just want to thank our planning commission because they've worked on this project for quite a long time. And I also want to thank our applicant because they've also worked on this for quite a long time. And they've made a number of accommodations and our planning commission has done a really good job to adhere to our, to our comprehensive plan. And we, we have those plans because they help developers understand what our vision is for the city. And so they've done a great job in doing that. And I appreciate, yes, potential future neighbors and neighbors, the good work that they've done in making some accommodations and concessions to conform their vision to the comprehensive vision of, of the city. Ultimately, the, the planning commission declined to recommend an approval of all the variances primarily because of the, the, the first variance request, which is the proximity of the drive-thru speaker to the property line. And I have, I have a personal opinion on this, this issue. There are very few Dunkin' Donuts, I think that's in, in the area at this time. I think it's one of the, the potential benefits of having a Dunkin' Donuts in, in the area is that there are new, there is one up in New Hope. I went up there, it was busy. And, and I listened to the speaker at about fifty feet. And at about fifty feet, and I'm not sure, maybe there's somebody here that can speak to this tonight. But at about fifty feet, the noise I heard from the speaker pointed towards me was similar to the voice that I heard of the person in the car speaking towards the speaker. And that was at fifty feet. So I felt, I, I feel very good that while, even though the, the planning commission is doing a good job just evaluating the ordinance, my personal experience up in New Hope was that the eighty, the eighty-five feet that, that they're requesting, or eighty-five point and a half feet would, would more than accommodate our residents. And in terms of what, what this development could mean, I know there, as, there, there's been a lot of really good and healthy conversations and rightly so as a community, that Penn Central corridor is a great space for small business owners. Love small business owners. I am a small business owner. We need, we need more of them in Richfield. Part of our future as a community is one, I think, having more community spaces. And two, having a great, a great food culture. Having the additional drive-through traffic that, that a Dunkin' Donuts is going to provide, I think, will be, will be good and I trust will be catalytic. Also, in terms of other fast food opportunities, I think Dunkin' Donuts is a community-oriented gathering space. Where, not to cast dispersions against other, other, other restaurants, but you might be less inclined to go and meet people at other restaurants. I really think at a Dunkin' Donuts, people will go there to have coffee, to connect, to network. People that get off the bus lines will be, have, have an opportunity to get coffee there. So I really think for those reasons, this is a, this is a timely application and a good application, especially given my personal experience with the drive-thru speaker, I would recommend that we approve this, the requested variances and approve their, their permit.
Councilmember Troutman, I just have a question about your comments. That was not with the new speaker technology, correct?
I'm unaware of what speaker technology it was. So I would be, I, I don't know if there's anybody here tonight that could, that could speak to that speaker technology.
Yeah, I don't think.
If you're going to, please, if you want to come up and just address the technology, just please state your name and sign in.
I'm Damon Dranchak and I'm with the Dunkin' Donuts franchisee. And the Dunkin' Donuts that you did visit, and that's one of the first three that has been open, and that one was the first one, that does not have this new technology that you were talking about. And I can go through the details on how that works if, if you want me to do that. But it's good to know that that, the old technology is actually sufficient, but, but ours is, is more advanced than that. And it's a simple explanation if you'd like me to go through it for you.
Please do.
Okay. So for, how it works, it works on ambient noise. So the speaker adjusts itself based on the ambient noise of what, what the traffic would be. So what traffic, a heavy traffic decibel reading is about seventy. And of course, that's going to vary, vary throughout the day and vary through how much traffic or if there's diesel cars coming through. But the research shows that a heavy traffic is at about seventy decibels. So the way the building is going to be oriented is actually going to reduce the decibel level or the ambient noise. So you couldn't go out there right now to figure out what the ambient noise would be at the speaker because the building is not the way it was, would be. So also common, common research shows that a building like this would reduce the ambient noise by about fifteen decibels. And how this, how the speaker works is it would raise up to a maximum of fifteen decibels based on the ambient noise. So what you've got, you've got at the street, you've got about seventy decibels if it's busy. You've got the building reducing it by fifteen decibels. And then the speaker could go up, up to fifteen. So it's pretty much a wash. So what happens is, is every, every time you double the distance from the speaker, the decibel's reduced by six. So if the starting point is, is seventy, at about eight feet, your decibel reading goes down to fifty-two. At thirty-two feet, you're down to forty. And at ninety-five feet, it's down to thirty. And why, why I chose ninety-five, because the, the building, the property line is eighty-five as you noted. The building is another ten. I think it's seven, but it's, it's up about three feet. So, so from the speaker to the, the building is ninety-five. So the, the decibel reading would be about thirty at the building. But you've got to consider three other things. That's without a car in front of the speaker. So if you put a car in front of the speaker, it's going to deflect the noise north and south, not towards the building. It also does not account for a, a buffer line of, of additional trees that are proposed. And then it's also outside the building. So inside the building would obviously be less. So if it's thirty without all those three things, it's obviously going to be less than thirty and obviously going to be less than thirty inside the building. So, so a normal conversation is at about fifty-five. When you're talking to just two people talking, it's about fifty-five decibels. So thirty is about soft spoken or you may say a whisper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I can actually comment with some, some detail on that. I know that staff emailed out some of the locations that actually use that technology. And I had the chance to go out and take a listen. Ironically, it's like a hundred feet away from the Dunkin' Donuts, at a McDonald's in New Hope. So we gave New Hope some, a little bit of foot traffic. But at about that eighty-five foot level, I can attest that it, I don't even know if I'd say there was a whisper, to be quite honest. It was around the lunch hour and of course, not every, you know, location is apples to apples. But at, at that level, I, I was not left with the impression that this would be a, a very, if it's replicable, a, a huge issue for those residents or an issue at all really.
I think I would just add that, that if I didn't know this before, I'm firmly resolved that I'm a visual learner, not an auditory learner. So I got another explanation. I, I heard a lot of decibels, a lot of this and that. But I also know, we did, I'm going to hearken back to when we were discussing the ban shell. And the concern was the decibel levels and everything permeating going across sixty-sixth Street and affecting the houses there. In my recollection, thirty decibels is negligible. That, and, and that came out of the ambient noise of sixty-sixth Street and carried across. And there, and I think thirty decibels didn't even get to where you, you exceeded the ambient noise from sixty-sixth Street. And Penn, Penn, I think probably in that location is busier than sixty-sixth Street is across from Veterans Park. So, so I'm pretty comfortable with that. If I just make a, a couple of comments. When we moved to Richfield in nineteen eighty-five, I live approximately where the apartment buildings are in, in proximity to where you're going to build the, the facility. Um, I'm on Sixty-Seventh and uh, and when we moved in, there was a moratorium on development, development along the Penn corridor, anticipating some improvements and trying to do something. And in the thirty-three years we've been there, there's been four major projects that have gone in. And it's not for lack of, of trying and the city cooperating with developers. It is the extraordinarily difficult layout and geographical, the way, the way Penn Avenue Corridor was laid out with the, with the, all the fronts on Penn, commercial, and then at least on the west side, an alley, and then single-family residence. And single-family residence budding right up to the commercial properties on, on the, on the east side. When you take a look at that and you try to figure out what you can put on what, what is a fifty-by-a-hundred-and-twenty-foot piece of land, at least most of the lots now, you've got, you know, double or triple lot and the owners, um, I, I think it's a wonderful concept to allow you to do the landscapes all the way to Sixty-Sixth because it's going to make that corner property much more attractive, given the population that you're going to draw to the Dunkin' Donuts. So, I, I think there's, there's some, some, not rumblings, but some discussions with the, the Penn Avenue Corridor um, group that, that was established five or six years ago and set up guidelines and was trying to put things in place to improve the corridor. And they're all great ideas. Guidelines, um, well, are just sad guidelines, but they, they, they give a vision of what they want. And, and my recollection of your work with staff and everything has done everything you can to get as close to those guidelines as possible. So, um, it was, it was a, a difficult trek. Uh, I, I applaud you for continuing to work at it and understanding how important it was to Richfield and the staff for working with you, trying to come up with these solutions. I think, um, a, a couple of things that, that sometimes make it difficult. And I asked, uh, I asked staff to, to give me some information on, number one, where the hundred-and-fifty-foot originally came from in the first place. And it came in two thousand two and it was adopted from other city ordinances. So, I don't have, we don't have any background on why it came up. Was that an arbitrary? Was there engineering test done at that point? That, that, that would give you some indication of how much distance you needed in two thousand two. And, and then the, the technology and the upgrades on that that you provided us, you know, give us a fairly comfortable understanding that, that while there's concern for the five one-bedroom apartments that back right onto that property, the steps that were taken both in terms of technology and your continuing representation that, that you're going to devise, whatever the berm is and whatever the buffer is there, uh, is going to be both aesthetic and if it needs additional, uh, decibel level reduction, then, then we're going to work towards that. So, I'm a hundred percent comfortable in, in stating that I think that the, the residents that live behind that property are going to be fine and aren't going to be bothered by it. And I think it's going to be a great, a great addition to the Penn Avenue Corridor. So, thank you for sticking with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, just a couple, uh, questions and then, uh, the, notwithstanding my comments on the, the sound, I, I would like to hear some assurances that if the situation is different, if there are concerns from residents, that there'll be some way that those will be mitigated uh, in terms of working with staff and trying, trying to address some of those things.
I'm, I'm sure they will. I don't want to speak for the, the property owners. But I know that we have met with staff numerous times. And um, every time we've, we've talked with them, they've come up with recommendations. And uh, we as franchisees have been accommodating and the property owner has.
Hi, Carla Carlson here with Penn Avenue Partners Two. Thanks for having me. Mayor Elliott, council members, um, I think that we're going to do everything we can to address any concerns from the residents and anybody else. Um, I think that, you know, one thing that we'll work on is making sure that that speaker doesn't, doesn't gain a volume lo, larger that, that matters. So, I think we can set a maximum volume on that speaker. Is that right? I think that's one.
It does that.
I think that's one major, um, barrier. But I really, you know, I'm, I'm feeling just as positive with, as you guys are about the fact that with the buffer that we're going to put up, the big trees, we already have a fence there. With the new speaker technology, I really don't think that there are going to be any concerns. And I don't think that any have been voiced by any of those residents living in that apartment yet. Um, and I, and I really, um, I feel confidently that we won't have any. But we're certainly willing to work with anybody who brings something to our attention in the future.
Thank you. And, and then the buffer was my other question. If I recall, there was some discussion about working with staff to look at that buffer and what that would actually look like. Has, has been there further discussions related to the buffer and clarifications from staff and?
I think, um, the resolution was updated since the Planning Commission meeting to add some larger overstory trees. Um, so we have agreed to that and we, you know, we're in, in agreement that we will add those larger trees. So, that, that's been the only change to, that I'm aware of.
Great, thank you.
There's a stipulation in the resolution for approval that includes that.
Great, thank you. Um, so just my thoughts on, on this. Uh, I, I think that when you look at the unique characteristics of Penn Avenue, that does require us to be open-minded, uh, and flexible if we want to actually see some development happen here. And so, that's what I see us doing here with this approval. Uh, is it the perfect, uh, plan that conforms with all of our guidelines? You know, probably not, but I don't think that perfect should be the enemy of progress on a corridor that has seen very little of it, uh, for a number of years. And the feedback that I've heard mainly from residents is that they're excited about a Dunkin' Donuts in Richfield. And so, uh, I do appreciate that there's been improvements to this, uh, development all along the way. Uh, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Howard. If I, if I may just a second, uh, just, just clarify for the record. There's been excellent development in the Penn Central corridor, um, in a lot of different parts. The, the fireside foundry and um, um, the, the updates with Aldi and um, and the, the new Scandinavian furniture. So, there is development, but we have pockets that, uh, that definitely need development. We're really glad that as neighbors, you're going to hopefully, uh, you know, be our new neighbors. And we appreciate again that you're working with, uh, us to conform your vision to part of that plan.
And Mr. Mayor, just, um, you know, want, just to let you know that all of us here are professional donut eaters. So, we'll have to stop by and visit you. You know, that's another skill that we have.
Further comments?
Further comments? Further comments? Then I would move to approve the resolution, um, uh, to allow a conditional use permit uh, in the variances for a restaurant with a drive-through at Sixty-Fifth Twenty-Nine Penn Avenue, uh, Sixty-Fifth Forty-Five Penn Avenue and Twenty-two Ten Sixty-Sixth Street West.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez. This is a fun one.
I was actually just going to say the same exact thing. All right. So, the next ish, item for council consideration is consideration of youth appointments to the city advisory boards and commissions. Terms of city advisory commissions, youth members expired in August of thirty-first of two thousand seventeen. Advisory commission terms for youth members are for one year. The city council, uh, the city council directs the city manager's office to conduct a recruitment seeking applicants to fill youth vacancies. This recruitment includes information on the city's website, Facebook page, and distributed to local high schools. Applicants were interviewed at the special city council session, work session held on October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Um, and I did want, do I read this right now or? Okay. So, we had vacancies on the advisory board of health, the arts commission, community services commission, friendship city commission, human rights commission, and transportation commission. So, we did fill the advisory board of health with, by Ruth Kiflu. We did not fill any, the vacancy in the arts commission. Um, we did fill the vacancies in the community services commission with Haley Harges and Deanna Bautista. We did not fill the vacancy on the friendship city commission. And we did fill the two vacancies on the human rights commission with Grace Verboogie, Verboogie and Matthew Clef, Kiflu. And we did not fill the transportation commission. And again, I think one of, I absolutely love to do, um, the interviews for our boards and commissions, especially the youth vacancies. They are extremely impressive. And I mean, that's not even saying, that's not even saying how impressive they were. I can't believe these are, you know, kids who, their aspirations, what they bring to the table, the ideas that they have are just excellent. And every single student who came, I just wanted to tell them, and some of them I did, whatever you need, we are here for you. We're here to support your leadership and your growth. And it was absolutely excellent to, to be able to interview them.
If, if I just may add, and, and I think the, the citizens heard when Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez was reading out the, the assignments and the appointments that we still have several commissions that, that are looking for youth representatives. And I think what, hopefully what we can do is, is publish and, and accept, uh, applications, you know, early next year and try to fill some of the other slots. Because I think historically, we've improved greatly in, in getting applications and, and appointing youth members. Um, and I can only speak from my experience, but the, the enthusiasm and the energy they bring is a, is a great addition to every commission they end up serving on. So, the, the, the more that'll pie, the more we can place, I think, the better off all the commissions will be. So, hopefully, we can, we can keep moving in the right direction. So. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to appoint persons to fill vacant youth terms on city advisory board and commissions.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
They're appointed. Um, last item on the council agenda is consideration of the city council's approval of the mayor's appointment of a Housing and Redevelopment Authority commissioner. On December thirteenth, two thousand eleven, the city council established by resolution that the public's interest is best served by having a composition of two appointed council members and three mayor-appointed citizens serve on the HRA. Doris Rubenstein was appointed to a five-year HRA term on November nineteenth, two thousand seven, and reappointed on October twenty-third, two thousand twelve, and her current term expired October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. Applications for the appointment were sought from residents between September fifteenth and October fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. And the city council held interviews with applicants on October seventeenth. I would suggest that all three applicants that we interviewed were qualified, enthusiastic, and had very, very strong reasons on, on believing that, that they would be a good appointment to the HRA. I, I'm not, not intending to set a precedent or, or otherwise indicate that, that the appointment of HRA commissioners is not rightfully belong to the mayor. But because of the, the composition of the current council and, and the fact that we don't necessarily share an entirely same worldview, that we have an amazing spirit of cooperation and we're able to get a lot of things done through debate and reconciliation and basically an understanding that, that in order to move forward, sometimes we have to set aside our own independent beliefs or, or, or reasons for, for a certain thing and, and come together and, and as, as much as possible, come up with unanimity in trying to, to find the right way forward for, for the city. In that regard, um, I didn't feel it was appropriate that, that we would interview all these people and then decision would be solely mine. So, I, I solicited independent, uh, comments and everything from, from all the members then. And I think, uh, I think I can say that, that we came up with the person that, that we all felt was best suited to take Doris Rubenstein's position, and that would be Erin Freeze Daniels. Um, I do have to caution Ms. Daniels that there is no raise in pay and you're going to have to put in a little bit more time, but it's a labor of love, so welcome to the HRA.
Congratulations.
Well, I suppose, you know, I, now see, I went and said that, that I, I, I abdicated the responsibility and then I didn't even put it to a vote, as if I could just do it myself. So, at this time, I would move, uh, the appointment of Erin, Erin Freeze Daniels to the HRA to serve a five-year term expiring on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Um, city managers report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I really don't have anything new to report. I just, uh, just want to echo a couple of things that happened, uh, this evening. First of all, uh, the commendations that were given by, by Chief Henthorn. To me, uh, just accentuate the culture of the Richfield Police Department. And, um, and what a wonderful police department we have. Um, we have a great police department. Have a lot of, uh, a lot of new officers and some good, um, uh, longer-term officers. And it makes a, it makes for a very good police department. And, um, you're just, you just saw an example of why we should, we should be so proud of it. And then the last thing is, uh, all the work that everybody did. The idea that we're, we are now, we're on the path of getting that underpass. I mean, oh, my gosh, from the time we first started working on it to getting the money, uh, from the legislature in two thousand fifteen, to now actually being able to use that money to move forward is darned exciting and it's on its way. And that's, uh, that's something that I've personally been looking at for a very long time. That's it.
Just, just maintain your sense of fiscal responsibility.
Yes.
Don't overpay.
No.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Well done.